This time I'll step the Navy's in going full session for suit, Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three B. For the purposes of discussing attorney and client privilege information. One more, oh sorry guys. Lady Washington made effective seconded all here say aye.
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 Close some of the room.
At this time, I will accept the motion to begin the closed session and return to the open meeting.
Go.
Second.
Yeah, all affairs say aye.
Aye.
Closed, go move. All right. Uh, any new employee? Future work needing topic. And then we'll go back to the Nameless Coalition discussion.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Anne Linseff. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. And I'm here today to talk with you about a request from the Nameless Coalition. Health and Human Services has had a contract with the Nameless Coalition since 2018. That contract has included $10,000 annually to support the work that the Nameless Coalition does in our community, which is very valuable. Health and Human Services made payments on that contract in 2018 and 19, but it did not make payments. Health and Human Services did not make payments on the contract in 2020, '21, and '22, as we did not receive an invoice from the Nameless Coalition in those program years. Um, our contract does require invoicing by providers before we do issue payments. I was contacted by Reed, who's here with me today, Reed Olson, President of the Nameless Coalition. And he contacted me in early February to request payments for those program years. Um, we did pay out per program year 2023, the $10,000 that is in that contract. And I kind of think we're in between a rock and a hard place because we really, Health and Human Services really supports the work that the Nameless Coalition does. But ultimately, we did not budget for an additional $30,000 to pay the Nameless Coalition in program year 2023. So I did include in the agenda bill where the funding comes from in the Health and Human Services budget. It does come out of the Adult Mental Health Initiative Housing Subsidy Area. We budgeted $25,000 in that area for 2023. Of the $25,000, we've paid out $10,000 to the Nameless Coalition. And we've paid out $5,000 in other housing costs that are allowed under the Adult Mental Health Initiative grant that we received through the Department of Health and Human Services. Um, we have $10,000 remaining, and it is $10,000 that we use to support people with serious and persistent mental illness to remain in the community. Um, that being said, the Nameless Coalition, the Wolf, does support individuals who have serious and persistent mental illness. Um, so it would be an appropriate use of funds to support them with those funding dollars. Um, but that does not come close to covering what is being requested by the Nameless Coalition at this point. I think we wanted to share the information with you of the request, where Health and Human Services is at with our budget. Um, the contracts are made between the County Board and the Nameless Coalition. So ultimately, the decision is yours as to whether or not we pay out the $10,000 for program years 2020, '21, and '22. Um, I'm happy to share additional information if you have any questions for me, and I know that Reed would like to speak as well.
Questions?
Sure.
Yes.
So this, I'm not sure if this is a question for Tom or for Jody or for any other contracts that we would have other than, let's see, maybe it's, I don't know what it would be for. If, if, if an entity doesn't bill us for whatever it is, whatever our contract is, is it county policy that you don't reserve that money, assuming that at some point that bill may actually get sent? Is it, so I'm
That's a great question, Commissioner Carlson. So we would budget the money that was anticipated for the expenditure in the year that the budget was developed. If the expenditure is not realized, but we believe it's going to be coming, then we can, what we call, carry that forward. Uh, we did not do that in this case. Uh, we, I guess, weren't aware or uh, believing that it was going to be money that would need to be carried over. So that, that money essentially got reprogrammed into the next budget. And then that happened again. So for the two or the three years, two or three years that are being discussed here, that had been the practice, that essentially, well, there was no expenditure in that amount. Either that money got used some other place, or it got returned to the balance and then was reprogrammed for the following year. That's the challenge that I think Anne is discussing today, is that when we reprogram that money for this next budget, it was programmed at an amount that included yet again, the $10,000 to the Nameless Coalition, the $5,000, as she said, for the other, the other program parts, and then the $10,000 for the broader use. So we kind of been continuing that practice going forward because we never received a bill, we never expended it, that money goes back, it just gets, it gets redeployed the, the next year. So the challenge is that there's no money in the budget because of those years that are now being contested. Um, the, the expense wasn't paid out and therefore wasn't carried forward either.
So Mr. Chair, I, I guess my, my question would be to Reed.
Reed, you want?
Um, you must have had some really good years, and you didn't need to send us a bill for $10,000. My goodness.
Yeah. One would think.
COVID money maybe is what I, of what I'm thinking.
Sorry, COVID?
Maybe you had some COVID money and you didn't need our money.
That's, that is one explanation. Um, I, a lot of it has to do with, with some shifting of, of board members and, um, and new, new people. Coming in and basically me not knowing that I was supposed to invoice. Um, and yeah, it, it, um, we have had in the past, uh, a fair amount of, I mean, not like hundreds of thousands of dollars, but maybe tens of thousands of dollars in reserves. And this year, so, um, we opened up our day center, uh, a little over about 15 months ago, December of 2022. Um, December of '21, rather. Um, and so we didn't have anything budgeted for that. So we, we have spent down our reserves. Um, and it was this fall or this, this winter when we were really taking a, a fine tooth comb at our budget, trying to figure out exactly how we're going to make it through this fiscal year, our fiscal year ends in June, that we discovered that we hadn't been invoicing for that. So, um, I mean, one hand, you could say, yeah, during the COVID years, 2020, we definitely got a lot of help from the state. Um, and, um, and so it would have been easier to not notice that. Um, right now, we're in a really big pinch, and so we've been looking for, um, for money wherever we can. And then it was actually, I, I reached out to Jeff, um, in late January and said, hey, I, I have yet to receive a, a payment from you all. And he said, well, you have to invoice us first. And so that's when we realized that there's this, um, and is that's when we realized that, that, that we hadn't received those funds in the last three years. But then I'll say that every, every, is it November, Jeff, Lynn and I meet and we go over our, our contract and we go over the goals that we set because they're goals that they, that they demand of us, performance goals. Um, and so we've all been acting in good faith as if that money has been coming in. Now we are a, we are growing, we have grown a lot as an organization and we have a much better budgeting system now than we did in the past. And so that's one of the reasons why we found out about it now.
Other questions?
You want to follow up?
No, I know. I'm just thinking of, we could make this pretty short, I think. I just, it seems to me that, that the work that you do is very good. Anne has already spoken highly of the work that you do, but we also don't have it in a budget. And I'm just thinking that maybe we could pay that out, honor the contract, pay the money out, but pay it out, not all at once. Perhaps $10,000 now and then, and then build it into the budget for the next year, the, the balance, something like that. It's, it's what I'm kind of thinking. Just that way helps kind of ease through our budget problems. And yet still honor that contract and, and, and support the work that they do.
Okay. And I'd like to follow up with that and, and ask Tom, is there some other uh, funding mechanism that we can look to, to fund this?
Uh, Mr. Chair, there are several funds that the County Board has access to, which, uh, I believe the financial liability that we're, we're questioning here is $30,000. Is that right? So the LTAC money, I keep bringing that up occasionally. It's a hot topic, right? Uh, that is available to you for these types of expenditures. There are some ARPA dollars that are available for expenditures. Um, the SAM grants, uh, might be appropriate for use as well in this particular situation. Since there is a larger strategic use for, uh, those funds toward the goals that have been described in the contract. Uh, those are three that immediately come to mind. Um, Health and Human Services might have some reserves that you could also pull from as well. That would, that would be tied directly to Health and Human Services. Um, that's kind of risky in that we sometimes don't know what the expenditures are for the year, uh, in Health and Human Services based upon the uh, status of certain citizens in, uh, in the county in regards to their needs and our obligation.
Go.
Second.
Yeah, all affairs say aye.
Aye.
Close. So. All right. Uh, any new employee? Uh, future work the topic. And then we'll go back to the Nameless Coalition discussion.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Anne Lynn Suth. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. And I'm here today to talk with you about a request from the Nameless Coalition. Health and Human Services has had a contract with the Nameless Coalition since 2018. That contract has included $10,000 annually to support the work that the Nameless Coalition does in our community, which is very valuable. Health and Human Services made payments on that contract in 2018 and 19. But it did not make payments. Health and Human Services did not make payments on the contract in 2020, 21, and 22. As we did not receive an invoice from the Nameless Coalition in those program years. Our contract does require invoicing by providers before we do issue payments. I was contacted by Reed, who's here with me today, Reed Olson, President of the Nameless Coalition. And he contacted me in early February to request payments for those program years. We did pay out per program year 2023, the $10,000 that is in that contract. And I kind of think we're in a between a rock and a hard place because we really, Health and Human Services really supports the work that the Nameless Coalition does. But ultimately, we did not budget for an additional $30,000 to pay the Nameless Coalition in program year 2023. So I did include in the agenda bill where the funding comes from in the Health and Human Services budget. It does come out of the Adult Mental Health Initiative Housing Subsidy Area. We budgeted $25,000 in that area for 2023. Of the 25,000, we've paid out $10,000 to the Nameless Coalition. And we've paid out $5,000 in other housing costs that are allowed under the Adult Mental Health Initiative grant that we received through the Department of Health and Human Services. We have 10,000 remaining, and it is 10,000 that we use to support people with serious and persistent mental illness to remain in the community. That being said, the Nameless Coalition, the Wolf, does support individuals who have serious and persistent mental illness. So it would be an appropriate use of funds to support them with those funding dollars. But that does not come close to covering what is being requested by the Nameless Coalition at this point. I think we wanted to share the information with you of the request, where Health and Human Services is at with our budget. The contracts are made between the County Board and the Nameless Coalition, so ultimately, the decision is yours as to whether or not we pay out the $10,000 for program years 2020, 21, and 22. I'm happy to share additional information if you have any questions for me, and I know that Reed would like to speak as well.
Questions?
Sure.
Yes.
So this, I'm not sure if this is a question for Tom or for Jody, or for any other contracts that we would have other than, let's see, maybe it's, I don't know what it would be for. If, if, if an entity doesn't bill us for whatever it is, whatever our contract is, is it county policy that you don't reserve that money, assuming that at some point that bill may actually get sent? Is it? So I'm.
That's a great question, Commissioner Carlson. So we would budget the money that was anticipated for the expenditure in the year that the budget was developed. If the expenditure is not realized, but we believe it's going to be coming, then we can, what we call, carry that forward. We did not do that in this case. We, I guess, weren't aware or believing that it was going to be money that would need to be carried over, so that, that money essentially got reprogrammed into the next budget. And then that happened again. So for the two or the three years, two or three years that are being discussed here, that had been the practice, that essentially, well, there was no expenditure in that amount. Either that money got used some other place, or it got returned to the balance and then was reprogrammed for the following year. That's the challenge that I think Anne is discussing today, is that when we reprogram that money for this next budget, it was programmed at an amount that included yet again, the $10,000 to the Nameless Coalition, the $5,000, as she said, for the other, the other program parts, and then the $10,000 for the broader use. So we kind of been continuing that practice going forward, because we never received a bill, we never expended it, that money goes back, it just gets, it gets redeployed the, the next year. So the challenge is that there's no money in the budget, because of those years that are now being contested. The, the expense wasn't paid out, therefore wasn't carried forward either.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I guess my, my question would be to Reed.
Reed, you want?
Um. You must have had some really good years, and you didn't need to send us a bill for $10,000. My goodness.
Yeah. One would think.
COVID money maybe is what I, of what I'm thinking.
Sorry, COVID?
Maybe you had some COVID money, and you didn't need our money.
That's, that is one explanation. I, a lot of it has to do with, with some shifting of, of board members and, and new, new people coming in and basically me not knowing that I was supposed to invoice. And yeah, it, it, we have had in the past a fair amount of, I mean, not like hundreds of thousands of dollars, but maybe tens of thousands of dollars in reserves. And this year, so we opened up our day center a little over about 15 months ago, December of 2022. December of 21, rather. And so we didn't have anything budgeted for that, so we, we have spent down our reserves. And it was this fall, or this, this winter, when we were really taking a, a fine-tooth comb at our budget, trying to figure out exactly how we're going to make it through this fiscal year, our fiscal year ends in June, that we discovered that we hadn't been invoicing for that. So I mean, one hand, you could say, yeah, during the COVID years, 2020, we definitely got a lot of help from the state. And, and so it would have been easier to not notice that. Right now, we're in a really big pinch, and so we've been looking for for money wherever we can. And then it was actually, I, I reached out to Jeff in late January and said, hey, I, I I have yet to receive a, a payment from you all. And he said, well, you have to invoice us first. And so that's when we realized that there's this, and is that's when we realized that, that, that we hadn't received those funds in the last three years. But then I'll say that every, every, is it November, Jeff Lyndon and I meet, and we go over our, our contract, and we go over the goals that we set, because there are goals that they, that they demand of us, performance goals. And so we've all been acting in good faith as if that money has been coming in. Now we are a, we are growing, we have grown a lot as an organization, and we have a much better budgeting system now than we did in the past, and so that's one of the reasons why we found out about it now.
Other questions? Do you want to follow up?
No, no, I'm just thinking of, we could make this pretty short, I think. I just, it seems to me that, that the work that you do is very good. Anne has already spoken highly of the work that you do, but we also don't have it in a budget. And I'm just thinking that maybe we could pay that out, honor the contract, pay the money out, but pay it out not all at once. Perhaps $10,000 now, and then, and then build it into the budget for the next year, the, the balance, something like that. It's, is what I'm kind of thinking. Just that way helps kind of ease through our budget problems, and yet still honor that contract and, and, and support the work that they do.
Okay, I'd like to follow up with that and, and ask Tom, is there some other uh, funding mechanism that we can look to, to fund this?
Uh, Mr. Chair, there are several funds that the County Board has access to, which I believe the financial liability that we're, we're questioning here is 30,000, is that right? So the LTAC money, I keep bringing that up occasionally, it's a hot topic, right? That is available to you for these types of expenditures. There are some ARPA dollars that are available for expenditures. The SAM grants might be appropriate for use as well in this particular situation, since there is a larger strategic use for those funds toward the goals that have been described in the contract. Those are three that immediately come to mind. Health and Human Services might have some reserves that you could also pull from as well, that would, that would be tied directly to Health and Human Services. That's kind of risky in that we sometimes don't know what the expenditures are for the year in Health and Human Services, based upon the status of certain citizens in, in the county in regards to their needs and our obligations to pay for those needs. So while that is potentially possible, it might be a little bit more risky source, that being the Health and Human Services reserve. But those are several that you could think through.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Joe.
Is there also a, a reserve funding available at the County Board's approval for like a general fund or other reserves that the county has that could also potentially be used?
Well, yes and no. So no, there isn't a designated fund that's set up under the commission for this. But yes, you can do what you will within certain parameters with all of the funds. I mean, essentially, you as the board have oversight of all of the funds. Now, there are some funds that have some restrictions to it, like special use funds, where we couldn't just say, if it's intended for this use, and now you just want to use it for this, you can't do that. So there are some caveats to that. But for the most part, like if you wanted to hit general fund reserves, undesignedated fund balance, and pull 30 out of that for this, you could do that.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah, there's no restriction on that, other than what you want to carry as a reserve balance and, and all those sorts of things, but that is also available to you.
Mr. Chair.
Oh. I was just gonna say, it sounds like we may have a consensus to move this on to the regular agenda. And if there is, I would propose that we add it as an additional item. Okay, that will, that's a motion? I don't know if we need a motion.
You're just saying.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just to read, you were the one that personally signed the contract. And that, and you know, ultimately should have known that you needed to provide an invoice. It's right, isn't it? Right in that contract that you sign?
Right.
And so, you know, is it? And just, you know, coming back, going back this many years, it just seems excessive to, to, to think that you can go back and collect everything. You know, is that, is that reasonable? You know, if it was a regular business, would that be reasonable to, to go back three years to get every penny that you were due when you didn't follow through with what you were supposed to do?
I, I, I mean, of course, I'm going to say, yes, I think it's reasonable, you know, and, you know. Part of it is, yeah, part of it is the, the, the problem is just the, the capacity at our organization was very, very limited, you know, we had very few people fulfilling many roles, and so we didn't always have great accounting, I guess you could say. I mean, the, the, the opposite could also be asked is how, how, if the, if you all, the board allocated these funds and they never got expended, you know, so how, how is it that, that you guys didn't notice, you know, that, you know, you have more robust auditing than we do, and, and, and it just got missed by everybody.
Including yourself while you were on this board.
Yeah, yeah.
So you missed it from both sides.
Well, one of the, one of the things that I would like to just mention is, is as Anne has mentioned, they did for us what we would hope that they would do each of those years. We would have spent that money and probably more taking care of some of these folks in a different way if they had not been part of the program. So pardon me, is it's a fairness type thing that I think that we could be, we could do this and feel good about it.
And as the, the additional 5,000 that we normally, because the contract says not to exceed $10,000. And now the additional 5,000 that we provided this year, we've already kind of given them that.
By House to the Coalition, just out of that, the NHI housing subsidy fund, we have paid out $5,000 in other allowing housing costs to other entities.
But there's a $5,000 deal in our warrants today for, for the Nameless Coalition, I believe.
So in section the third or fourth down, budget impact. In our Public Human Services, NHI four, four, three housing subsidies, you know, budgeted in 2023 is 25,000. And HHS has paid the Nameless Coalition, well, 10,000, over the 2023 contract, and 5,000 in other housing costs to other providers. Why didn't you, maybe what's in the name?
So the 5,000 that's in our deal tonight is part of the 10,000, is that what you're saying?
Say that again.
The 5,000 that's in our warrants tonight is part of the 10,000, is that what you're telling me, that we're giving them 5,000 and 5,000?
Or does it go to the other entities? Uh, I guess, um, we have a warrant here, and it has, uh, the Wolf Center and, and our warrant.
That's what I was asking. So the 5,000 that's in there tonight is half of the 10,000.
Right.
That's what I was asking. Otherwise, you know, they've already gotten 15,000 when they normally were not to exceed 10,000. That was my point.
Okay. All right, there's a motion, or not a motion, a suggestion that we just move it on to, are we talking onto the consent agenda?
Not on the.
No, not on the consent agenda. Okay, on the regular agenda. Yeah, I, I think that would give us more time for discussion.
Yeah.
Hey, you want? I, I'm fine with that.
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, yeah. It sounds like using consent. Yeah, right. I keep forgetting that too, Joe. We don't make motions in second, but we do.
The beginning of the next.
Yeah, we just nod and agree. I guess, uh, so you'll put that down, John?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're going, thank you.
I'll, I'll stay for that in case you, more questions, right, come up.
Okay.
So I'll be.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to acquisition of conservation fund, our, our parcels. And we've, yes, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm speaking to this issue since the Natural Resources Manager is away. And essentially, we were owing you a follow-up conversation in regard to the Conservation Trust lands that we talked about the last work session. The board seems generally favorable, as I recall, based on a contingency, which is to say how the two townships felt about losing potential tax dollars by making the allocation to the, the Conservation District. And staff did visit with both townships, and both townships were agreeable and willing. In fact, we were surprised Echols was quite strong, strongly wanting to have those lands preserved and set aside. So we feel like we've done our due diligence, and the, and the recommendation on this thing will be to essentially, you know, move forward with the conveyance of that, and, and have that turn over to the Conservation Trust from the, from the county, vice versa.
Mr. Chair, I spoke with Dick at the length of this, one of the chunks of land is actually in one, in my district, and he originally had recommended only getting two of the three 40s in Fron Township. After speaking with the Town Board, they requested that, that they, that we take all three of the 40s. So that is in, the recommendation is actually for all seven of the 40 acre parcels in both Echols and Fron Township, for us to take, take them, or over.
Okay. So. And I was at the Echols meeting, and there was absolutely a majority that spoke to wanting the, the county to take them over. So and it was with the directing and both entities, it was told that they would get 10% of the revenue, just like we do with other parks that we have. Okay? I don't. I didn't double check, is that on consent?
We don't have a document for you to approve, so what we were looking for is direction. We'll take the direction back and then start working up those documents and bring that back to you for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, moving right along. Maybe.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kurt Anderson, I'm the Director of the Economic Assistance Division, and I've got with me Will Hallberg, who is our supervisor for teams that work with our healthcare coverage for, for our county residents that are on medical assistance. Today, we'll be talking with you for about 10 minutes to provide some information on the upcoming start of medical assistance renewals. And this, of course, is due to unwinding of continuous coverage, and I've got to remember.
This one, there you go. Let's see.
Yeah, there, there is a letter of support in our packets, and that, so did we not need to give you authorization to send that letter of support now?
I, I think you did, in regard to your direction as a letter of support, but it's not a formal approval of the documents, yes. Yep, thank you.
Good, go ahead, Kurt.
Okay. So just to provide a little bit of a backstory to this, medical assistance renewals, just like were stopped during the public health emergency to COVID, and the intent behind this was to help preserve access to healthcare coverage for a lot of Minnesotans. But due to the changes that were brought out by the federal government's passing of the 2023 federal spending bill, that spending bill resulted in renewals that will begin taking place here in Minnesota come July of 2023 and continue for a year-long process with that. What's changing with this is, I mean, if we take a look at our July cohort, we have approximately 1,300 out of our close to 20,000 individuals within the county that are on public assistance healthcare that will be, that will start getting information about their renewals. Some of those clients, depending on the system that they have their healthcare insurance with, are getting their renewal notices this month. We have a smaller amount of our residents that'll be getting renewal notices next month. And these are all residents that have to complete their renewal by one July with that. So while renewals themselves are not new to our system of medical assistance, we have not been doing them for three years due to the public health emergency. So there is going to be, you know, there is some questions about this. And it is a challenging workload when you consider looking at the next slide. We have approximately one in four households here within the county, or close to about 40% of our residents, or, excuse me, one third of our residents in the county are covered by medic, our medical assistance programs. The challenges that our county clients are going to be facing is because they had no reporting requirements during this three years, they, they may have moved to a different residence, they may have a new phone number, and they were not required to report that to us. So really, for us during this period before one July, one of the biggest things we're trying to do with our clients is get the word out and let them know, we need your new address, we need your contact information. It's really important in order for you to continue to receive your medical assistance coverage. With that, I'll go on to Will, to cover the local impact.
Hello, Commissioners. So the local impact, so there is obviously a lot of concern. This is our largest program, over 99% of public assistance programs are cases that we have in Beltrami County have medical assistance active on that case. So it greatly exceeds SNAP, cash, or any of the other programs that we process. So obviously, we're, we're very concerned with, with this particular program and transitioning back to the old rules, if you will, right, and, and getting rid of the, the waivers. Beltrami County expended, as you can see, is a large number, 2240,232,000 dollars through medical assistance in 2022. That obviously has a huge impact on our community. As of 3/31/2023, Beltrami County services approximately 9,300 medical assistance cases with Minnesota Department of Human Services processing 400 Minnesota Care Cases. That's a program we do not process. And then to correct that number, it is not 500 Red Lake Nation Medical Assistance Cases, that's 2,500 medical assistance cases for Red Lake Nation that are actually processed either by Red Lake Nation or the Department of Human Services. Those are not processed by us. The reason why I put those up there is because that still affects Beltrami County as a whole when we look at our population and the need, okay? Approximately, so that number should be corrected, to 20,800 people are receiving medical assistance or Minnesota Care in Beltrami County. The level of effort, so with the renewals will begin for the month of July, and is complex, and it is involved. And we are getting a lot of support from the Department of Human Services, I have to say. Historically, we've had some frustrations with what we would like to see from them and what they can provide. But it has truly been a full-court press on their part to come up with solutions and innovation that will help with this process. So I want to take a moment just to say thank you to Department of Human Services for all the efforts that they've been making. Beltrami County, as an example, has 726 cases representing 1,245 people up for renewal in the first month. 200 of those cases are in our legacy system called MAXIS. Don't want to lose anybody here by getting too far into the weeds, but, you know, MAXIS has been around since the 90s, and that's just cases that the, the updated Mets system or Minture still are not, that system still is not able to take on that level of complexity and take on those cases. So we have some that are still in that legacy system. Obviously, it doesn't have all the bells and whistles, and so it can take a little bit longer to process through that system. And then another 526 through Minture. Historically, before the, the waivers and the COVID-19 pandemic, 40% of the cases that were in the Minture system would auto-renew. It would bounce the information off federal hubs and other sources of information. And if everything was consistent and appropriate, the case would just auto-renew, the, the client would not have to do any actions, and they could continue on, which was fantastic. Obviously, that really helps. That process has actually continued to happen throughout the pandemic. Whereas if a person were to not pass the auto-renew, it would just stay in stasis until somebody acted on it, so it wouldn't close them. And what we're finding is 20% of the cases now are auto-renewing. So the reason why that's relevant is we have a larger number of cases because people were not being turned off, right? The normal churn of cases coming off of medical assistance has not been there, so we've seen about a 30% increase. And when we go back to processing renewals, there's a 20% cut in the auto-renew process as, as compared to what we are staffed and prepared for. So we have our work cut out for us, okay? Obviously, that's got people concerned. So what does that look like for the income maintenance unit, and what is our capacity? Well, of the 21 IMU processors that work with medical assistance, six have experiencing, experienced processing renewals. So we've had turnover. Like everybody else, it is the new normal. And so this is a perishable skill as well. I haven't done it for three years, so even though six people have a learning curve, okay? So you want to be frank, there, there, there's going to take some time to relearn this. That having been said, again, Department of Human Services haven't always been their biggest fan in front of the board, but I have to say, they are making a great effort to make sure that we have all the training that we need to prepare us as well as possible for this effort. So that just-in-time training. And that actually, the first part of that training has already become available when we started doing it. So what are we doing? Okay.
So Commissioners, as, as Will stated, DHS is providing us and our team with just-in-time training to help us with some of these skills that have diminished over time as we've had some turnover. That being said, too, they are also pushing out communications through social media. There's a YouTube video out there for those clients that are so inclined to watch that, again, reminding them and pushing out about the need to update their information, and the fact that these medical assistance renewals are, are going to be processing, and that they will get their notice between three to, two to three months out to do their renewal. They are also going to be using text messages as well for our clients. Now, conversely, for us here at Beltrami County, over these three years, we also have invested in technology and in being able to reach out to our clients. So we do have our web upload on our county website portal for clients to be able to turn in documents, as well as we will continue to utilize our text message system. And in our call center with our case aids, we are continuing, as we talk with our clients, to make sure that we're getting the most updated phone number and address for them, and reminding them of the fact that the renewals are starting. We are also available, and Will's team is available for any questions that the client has. We try and turn those questions around very quickly. You know, within five business days to help them for any questions that they do have. And then with that, as always, myself and our team and Will's team are available for any questions that you all might receive as well. If you, if you have, please feel free to ask us. There is one do-out. We are currently within the Minnesota Legislature right now. There is some funding that is being looked at to help counties in the unwinding process, some additional funds. Right now, that has not passed, and we do not. Um, right now, that has not passed and we do not have those funds. But once that is passed, we get an idea of the, the final amount. Um, we will be coming before the board with a plan on how we will utilize those funds to assist with this unwinding process. Depending on any of your questions, commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks Kurt and Will for bringing this to our attention. Um, are you going to also put out like a frequently asked questions to try to limit, you know, get out there to social media, the website, whatever, to, to help reduce the same question being asked of your staff, uh, multiple times?
Uh, we, we do have, uh, some frequently asked questions, uh, that were in your packet. Um, that DHS has put out there on the site and we are letting clients who call in know about that. Um, I will look to get those also posted within our, um, medical assistance side of our webpage as well.
Other questions? Okay. Yes, Will.
Um, I just wanted to, to add as well, um, about 10 years ago, I stepped into this position and the income maintenance unit was in, in pretty dire straits at the time. And we had a lot of things that were impacted by, by that. Part of it was, uh, you know, uh, lingering impact of the 2008 economy and things of that nature. We've worked really hard over the last 10 years to try, well, to honestly develop the program so that that wouldn't happen again. Um, we've done really well through the COVID pandemic and been able to be nimble and adaptive to this and being able to keep people's cases open and keep people informed. I believe this piece will put us to test and I do believe that we are prepared for it. We have good staff. They are trained. Um, they're kind of chomping at the bit, if you will. But I want to encourage you that, um, there's no question in my mind, these renewals will get done and the vast majority of them will be done timely as long as we are received timely. Um, there may be other work as we gain capacity and learn how to work this larger caseload down to its appropriate size. Uh, there may be other work that maybe sets to the side. Uh, we don't plan on that. We don't want that to happen, but this is not where we will fall short. If people need medical assistance, if they are qualified for it, um, we will make that determination timely and we will make sure that that remains on so they can have the services that they need. Uh, I think that we owe that to our community, considering how things were in the past and the challenges that are before us. I'm sure there are those that remember and I want to give them confidence that we will take care of them.
Yeah, one of the things, Will, um, you're pretty much paperless now versus paper. I know back when, that was one of the big hangups that we would get calls is, yes, well, I turned my copy in and they said they lost it or they, I've done this three times and so, yes, you know, the responsibility, of, of course, is also with the clients. But as long as it's paperless, that should, I think, be a better situation.
I would agree. Thank you, Commissioner, for pointing that out. You're absolutely right. That does add a level of, I think, assurance as well. Um, it wasn't long after that that we were actually approached by the Department of Human Services and they were concerned that we were not being equitable in how we were processing cases, that people who say were minority were not receiving the same level of service. Between our EDMS system, that electronic file you're talking about, and DHS's own records, we were able to show that it was absolutely perfect across the board. Everybody got the same treatment and I think that's another piece of that, too, is the assurance. And one of the things that we, you know, provide people is when they, if they give us information, we scan it into our system, they receive a receipt. A date, timestamp with a picture of what it is that we received so that they have confidence in something in their hands that they know they turned it in and, and that there's accountability. But I think what we found with our web upload, um, you know, that started as an income maintenance piece that we initially did for, I think it was $3,000, uh, to be able to get that put in place. Uh, and it worked well for income maintenance. We expanded that into Health and Human Services as a whole. We get about 75% of the product, paper products that come in now come in digitally that way. So it's getting a lot of usage and what we're seeing already is with the programs that we are doing renewals on and that are, have been active and a lot of the waivers are gone, is that we are getting things far more timely. We would definitely see about a quarter of, of things turned in kind of late. I mean, the mail or what have you in people's lives. It's just too convenient to be able to take a picture with your phone, go onto the browser and upload it and have it in on time. And, uh, I, I think that that's going to continue to be a real service as we go through this piece, um, with the renewals. Uh, you know, we do have some other tools and being able to reach out with the texting, we do find the people tend to be more responsive. Does seem to fit into their life better. But we also have made sure to keep open those lanes that allow for more traditional, not everybody uses a phone to, you know, some people still have flip phones, um, what have you. Uh, so, you know, we still have our drop boxes. We still have, you can come into the, and, and, and then somebody will help you if you, if you have questions or what have you. Um, and then because we have the self-serve, both the self-service center, the drop boxes and these other, uh, ways for people to provide information to us, I think what you'll find is you can come into our lobby at any time and it looks nothing like it used to. When I started, uh, 10 years ago, uh, we had a smaller lobby and the line would go out the door and down the stairs. And it started when we opened our doors and it ended when we closed the doors. You go in there now and there is time. People can come in, they feel that they can have a conversation with somebody and work through that problem that is at that level where they feel like I've got to come talk to somebody. And I'm very proud that we've been able to do that.
Yeah, is there any?
Well, Mr. Chair. It's hard to believe that 10 years already went by, you know, I mean, uh, I think, uh, uh, Chair Anderson and, and myself might, might remember those days where we, uh, received plenty of those calls and, and I actually, uh, uh, voted against the, uh, the, I think it's DocuSign or, or some documenting that, uh, that was being proposed 10 years ago because I, I didn't have so much faith and confidence in, in our income maintenance, uh, department at that time. But, you know, um, getting through that and, and seeing, you know, what we're presented with today uh, gives me a whole confidence that, that you guys in your department will, uh, will, uh, make sure that you, everything is done right and correct. Um, because, uh, I, I hope that we don't get those kind of calls again. So I appreciate that. Thanks for your, for your work.
One last question for you, Will. And after you get through this initial challenging period here, do you anticipate the auto-renewals going back up to that 40% range?
I do anticipate we'll see that return 40%. Um, we are also working on and we're helping to, uh, in the second phase of an ex parte process using MAXIS that would allow actually for aged, uh, blind and disabled population that, uh, have social security disability established, that we can do, uh, kind of an in-house auto-renew for them so they don't have to fill out paperwork. We, we have access directly into, for example, the social security system so we can verify the, this information just like the Met system would do. We just do it ourselves and then some scripting that's been being written into MAXIS. So, uh, we're looking at right now with testing that we're doing an 80% success rate. So obviously, age-blind and disabled, a group of people, we want to be able to get, they're established with, uh, disability. We want to keep that MA up and running and consistent for them. And so we can actually get the work done right before the renewal be done. They wouldn't even necessarily have to get, you know, anything in the mail or anything, just a letter from us saying, hey, we took care of that, you know, continue on. Hopefully, you know, if you need anything, get ahold of us. So, uh, I think that these, this leveraging technology that has come forth both in Beltrami County from our efforts, but also put forth throughout, uh, in a request to the Department of Human Services for better solutions due to COVID. I think it's a different game. And I also want to remind the board, too, I think it's irrelevant to say here in this conversation. In fact, I just had a meeting today. Um, as we are doing these renewals, we will, uh, at least with the MAXIS cases, for those people who reside within Red Lake Nation boundaries, um, the, those cases will be handed off. They are processing healthcare now. And so this is the beginning. They've, they've already started taking new applications. This is the beginning of handing off that program, um, which will allow them to take on more full cases and then ease some of the burden that's been on us still, even though we've handed stuff off. We still keep a piece of case. This will allow us to fully hand off a lot of cases for them. And I think that what our work will look like a year later will be very different. Yes.
Well, thank you, Will, and thank you, Curtis. Um, appreciate you come, coming to the board and if we get some uh, calls or questions, we'll hand them over. Okay. All right, the next item is One Watershed, One Plan Update.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm Brent Rude, uh, Director of Environmental Services and SWCD District Manager. Zach Gutnik is with us today. Um, I brought Zach for moral support and for the hard technical questions. Now, he, Zach's the staff person that's, uh, really working directly hand-to-hand with, uh, One Watershed Plans. And, uh, that there's anything that comes up that I don't deal with as, as much, Zach can answer those. And he'll probably interject and correct me a couple of times here. But, uh, we wanted to start out just kind of, for, especially for the new commissioners, um, what is One Watershed, One Plan? Kind of a summary on where we're at with everything. Um, One Watershed, One Plan is a Bowser program that was designed to break down some historical barriers to water planning to allow for the partners to plan on a watershed scale rather than a political boundary. In like the early eighties, uh, counties were forced to adopt a water plan as part of their mandate in order to receive some of the funding that the counties get for implementing some of the natural resource programs like Charlotte Management or Septics or whatever, the Natural Resource Block Grants is what we call them now when they're combined. So the counties were forced to do it. There wasn't any money really provided from the state to do it. The state would give each county like $6,000 a year to do this and you had to come up with a new county water plan every five years or so. The Beltrami County historically has either contracted that out with, uh, like HRDC or even more often than not, they would pay the Soil and Water Conservation District to go through a process and lead it. The county was involved, but the SWCD usually coordinated and came up with the water plan. Um, it costs some money and the county received money every year in return for having it. The, the big kicker was, uh, we would have a water plan that was active on a county-wide scale and we would have some things in there that were specific to like, let's say, the Mississippi River Headwaters watershed. Well, our county water plan would be, well, we wouldn't even communicate with our neighbors. So it would be different than Hubbard's or Itasca's or anybody. So the watershed really was kind of uncoordinated and this was an attempt to eliminate those barriers. Um, so the, um, really brings together all the partners to, at one time, to plan the activities um, and priorities for the entire watershed and attempts to align all the different local plans and state water plans. Um, a local committee makes the decisions and completes the plan, which is funded by Bowser, which is different than the past. After the plans adopted, there are biannual grants to implement the practices, activities and plans on a priority timeframe that's established by the local committee. And this allows for local priorities to be addressed first, rather than the old way of competing in a, uh, competitive environment for grants. So we'd have to come up with a project that scored well on a state scoring basis. And we would struggle with that up here. We're really competing against projects in like, let's say, for discussion sake, the Minnesota River Valley where there's tons and tons of sediment in entering the river every year. And we want to do some sort of practice up here where we already have decent water quality. It's not totally impaired. And the, we often didn't get the funding for those projects.
Um, see Brent, interrupt you for a second. Just, you've mentioned Bowser a couple of times and some of the commissioners may not be familiar with that. The, it's a state organization called Board of, uh, Water and Soil Resources. And that's all, just in case you didn't know, acronym city.
Yeah, they fund most everything we do, so. It's the Board of Water and Soil Resources. Yes, they get their, their credit. Um, yeah, and so the last couple of things here is landowners decide if or how involved they want to be when it comes to implementation. And, um, One Watershed, One Plan doesn't create any new rules or regulations. Uh, that's the, it doesn't force anyone to do anything. Sorry, I'll figure out how to use this. All right, the colors on this map show that 1W1P is the acronym for One Watershed, One Plan. 1W1P is, um, covering most of the state already. They're either completed or in progress. The entire state is scheduled to be done within the next two years, I believe. Yep. Um, so we're making great progress there. The bar graph on the right is Bowser's anticipated funding graph. So you can see it's anticipated to double in the next six years, funding for implementation especially. Um, so what we're getting now for some of these implementation, uh, grants, they may actually increase, like we're being told, up to double. Um, it's all potential yet, but we'll see. Um, and so far, everybody from the legislature to state agencies to LGUs and the citizens involved are all pleased and happy with, uh, the projects that are able to be done and completed with these plans and that they're, they're all based on local choices. Um, on the map on the right side, it just shows that there's eight watersheds in Beltrami County. So when we eliminated one county water plan, we acknowledge that we're going to probably be adopting eight watershed plans over the course of time. Um, on the left-hand side is, is the status of each of those eight. Most of them are complete. The two, the Roseau River and the Rapid Rainy River, um, the top north end, those are both in progress and they're almost done now. I believe they're both near completion. Uh, the upper and lower Red Lakes, one of the, the heart of Beltrami County, is just starting the planning process now. We have our first meeting later this month to officially kick it off the planning start. Um, we received the, the grant to do that one. Just want to make sure I'm not missing anything here. Uh, I just want to highlight our priority areas that we've established from the SWCD implementation part. The Mississippi Headwaters and Upper Lower Red Lakes are really the, the two main priorities in Beltrami County. And to a lesser extent, the Thief River is the next one and then a much smaller degree, the Clearwater River. And then the other ones, we don't have any active role in, in doing projects or implementing the watershed plans in those, those ones. But if somebody brings something to our attention or there's an issue that comes up, we'll definitely deal with it and help people out, but we're not going and seeking projects in those areas. Uh, she's got a couple of examples for you. This is the Thief River, One Watershed, One Plan, kind of concept summary. There's the partner logos on the right there. Everybody that, um, helped develop the plan has signed on to it. $530,000 was the last grant received for implementation. They're two-year grants. Most of that money is being spent in Marshall County. Most of the watershed and issues in that watershed are in Marshall County. Um, it's a restoration-based plan. There are some issues. There's some degradation in that watershed. Um, key concepts are looking to restore water storage capacity in the landscape, restore improved soil health, reduce sedimentation from, mostly from ag fields and keep the water forested landscape that is out there, um, as forested landscape.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So that's the, that's the watershed or the 1, 1W1P, uh, board or, or committee that I sit on and serve on. So, um, I, I think we may be looking for an alternative if somebody else, uh, has any interest. So just want to put that out there.
They're fun meetings, aren't they, Tim? Yeah, how they typically go is staff, there's a steering team and they get the nitty-gritty technical details dialed out and then bring it to a policy committee, usually for approval on things. This is a page right out of the One Watershed, One Plan for the Thief River Watershed. It's, uh, created by an engineer, if you can't tell. But, uh, kind of the highlight, I guess, here is that, um, this is what was identified as project needed in order to achieve a restoration goal on the Mud River. Um, most of the Mud River is outside of Beltrami County, but some of it is in the county. But the highlights I want to point out include, like, if they were going to achieve the goal that they're striving for in the next 10 years, they'd be looking at like 58 fields of cover crops and 297 individual projects like side water inlets or things like that that would be, um, working on reducing sedimentation in that river. Here's kind of a concept page for the Mississippi River Headwaters, One Watershed, One Plan. We're in the first year of implementation right now. We've been doing it for slightly over a year, I guess. Lot of partners, way more partners in this one. It was a lot more complicated than the other ones, I will say. Craig is the chair of the policy committee. Craig's done a great job at trying to coordinate that. Um, most of the partners had zero experience in One Watershed, One Plan when we started this one. That's why it was so complicated and hard. Um, we're hearing from all of our other partners that every One Watershed, One Plan is complicated and hard, but they're all just for different reasons. Jim can appreciate that. Yeah. But we received $865,000, uh, for a two-year grant to start implementing plan. Um, contrasting the Thief River Plan, this is a, the first plan in Minnesota that was written by local staff. We didn't hire a consultant firm to, to do that. We completed it in-house. And it's mostly a protection-based plan, meaning we have pretty good water quality in this watershed and most of it is a protection-based strategy. Um, so key concepts are forest stewardship planning and general private forest management activities addressing urban stormwater issues, working with lakeshore owners and working on soil health concerns, um, like using our No-Till Drill for cover crops, things like that. Um, here's an example of a page out of the Mississippi Watershed, One Watershed, One Plan. Um, this is kind of showing that, that what the overall goals were, what the priority lakes were for this goal and what we hope to achieve over the next 10 years. The goals are based on a DNR study that showed when 75% of the watershed is protected or undisturbed. Showed when 75% of the watershed is protected or undisturbed, you should be able to expect relatively high water quality. Uh, prior to this study, it was nearly impossible to establish metrics for a protection strategy on a watershed basis. So most everything in northern Minnesota is based on that study of, um, less than 25% disturbed or unprotected lands in the watershed is kind of your, your goal. And the last slide here is, uh, the upper, lower Red Lakes. We're just starting planning on that. Like you said. Uh, the planning grant we received is two hundred and forty thousand dollars and that's just, um, tire, uh. Most, I think that one will be done mostly by a consultant. We have a couple of different partners on this one, um, really working hand in hand with the tribe, with Red Lake Band and the Red Lake Watershed District. And that'll be an interest, that's an interesting relationship. So that'll be an interesting dynamic to work through. Koochting County and Koochting SWCD are, are going to be involved a little bit. Um, they do have some high priority areas that are in the watershed, but. The portion of the watershed that's in their county just isn't very high. So it's going to be mostly these four people or groups that are doing it. And we anticipate a final plan in about 12 months and hopefully implementation in the fall of 24. There's, uh. We put down what we kind of anticipate are going to be the concepts. We don't know that for sure, but just. In talking to people and knowing what we do know grazing systems will be a big one. Forest, forest management will be another big one. And soil health will be somewhere in there too. I'm sure there's lots of other little ones, but. We'll, we'll be looking for input on who's going to be on the advisory committee for that one. And, um, not sure what else to do about that one. So. We just wanted to get, kind of give an update on where we're at with all of these different. Plans. You hear about them and see them on agenda bills from time to time and. In a nutshell, it's hard to summarize all that in a short synopsis, but.
Uh, Mister Chair. In regards to the upper, lower Red Lake, one watershed, one planet, if you are, uh, looking for a. Um, representative from the county board, I would be interested. If that's how the makeup of the, the committee is going to be.
We've already done that, right? Yeah, you're, thanks, Jim. No, we actually, we actually did that, um.
I thought he, I thought he was.
Yeah, yeah. It's been a while. I don't blame you for forgetting. But we tried to take care of all that when we were working on the memorandum of agreements with all the partners. So we could, but the grant actually took a little while for us to get from Bowser for this one. Because there was a lot of applications for the planning grants this round. And they really wanted to try to fund them all and it exceeded their money that they had there. So they were trying to find more money and they did find more money. So we were able to start right away.
Good John.
Yep. So just a quick question, Brent. You said all these one watershed, one plans. That nothing is mandatory. Is that correct?
Correct.
So these are, these are things. So if you would talk to, um, a farmer that has cattle grazing. You, would you go out to him and say, we would appreciate if.
Correct.
How does that work? I mean, just want to make sure the public does understands that this isn't some heavy-handed government.
Yeah. So I, I'm just going to make up a scenario that kind of exists, kind of doesn't up like, so like, say the upper, lower Red Lake one. If, uh, if a priority is identified, getting cattle out of the stream and looking at restoring that. Um, we would put something in the plan that would identify that as a priority. And it would identify, what are we going to do for that? Like, so fencing out the cattle would be one thing. Um, providing grazing system design so they could better use their pastures that they have and maybe provide water source for them. Um, and then when it gets to implementation, we would look at divvying up the funds that are allocated for implementation for that watershed and say, hey, if this is the high priority. We know a water system costs X dollar. We're going to make sure we have at least that for, let's say, three or four water systems in the watershed. And we're going to put money for designing these grazing systems and we're going to put money in there for fencing or to help pay for fencing. It might be a cost or basis or something like that. Once we have the funding there, we would go talk to landowners and we would meet with them. Usually what happens. Is when, when we have the meetings and we have the advisory committee and there's public involved a little bit in this, usually we hear from people that are interested in it. And so we know who the low hanging fruit is going to be. And so we can kind of. Hear those funds to address those people that are ready right away to do those projects. We don't have to go search for them. But we will, we'll go meet with people and, and show them to say, hey, here's a, here's a product that we have that we can offer some assistance on. If you're willing to do this. You know, it's maybe cost them 50% or 25% or whatever what it might be, and we can try to figure out ways to fund it.
So there is, there is money available to help.
Yep.
Whatever the mitigation is.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Well, thanks for sharing. Uh, I'm sure there are probably more questions, but, uh, I think we're going to move on to the next area. Thank you very much. Okay, we have cannabis, uh, edible discussion.
Good evening, Commissioner Sheriff Briggs with. Addressing you with the human resources director, Linda Tran and David Hands, his attorney. We were kind of asked to put together just a brief, high level overview of. Kind of where we're at in the community and I'm going to provide that portion of it. Um, and then Linda is going to move on to, uh, county policy and, and, and with the human resources side of our, uh. Have a show to look at this or deal with it. This isn't, uh, I, I intend to not debate any legal. Opinions or anything like that. I'm sure David's probably not in that type of situation either. Uh, and nor am I proposing any type of, you know, bias one way or the other. So these are just some common forms. I just took these off the internet. This isn't necessarily the, the end of the circumstances for what we have for edibles in our community. Um, I just wanted to kind of give you guys an idea of what they look like right now. They're marketed as gummies or drinks. Um, in Minnesota. Okay, it's under statute, Minnesota statute 151.72. And in there, there's about six pages of. I'll just call it gobbledygook because there is no enforcement for local law enforcement to deal with any of this. This is just simply the law that was passed to make these legal in the state of Minnesota. And I think ultimately what happened after the fact was they realized, holy crap, we passed this. Now what are we going to do with it? Because they didn't put any provisions in there other than you can't sell it to a child or anybody under the age of 21. Uh, there are some, I, I just kind of provided a little bit of what the statute is here. Like I said, there's about six pages of it. It discusses the power that is derived from hemp. It discusses what you can have for a percentage to sell it, which is point three percent. It's not supposed to contain any more than that in this, in the state of Minnesota, if it's going to have, uh. Cannabis in it. Uh, it's not supposed to be marketed to children. So the packaging has to be done in such a way. That it doesn't, it doesn't appeal to a child. Uh, look, mom and dad have a bag of gummies on, you know, they're not supposed to. Look like worms or bears or anything like that. But if you went back to that picture of the drinks, you know, if you walked into a. A place selling called drinks, could you determine that from an energy drink? I don't, I, I would have a hard time myself unless I absolutely read the can. Talks about some testing requirements, uh, some labeling requirements. Now I think there were some additional requirements in here pertaining to the FDA. Not sure if, uh, the, uh. The board of pharmacy has anything to do with testing of it, but we don't even have a, a means of testing this right now, but because it's legal. Uh, the BCA really would test it for us. Uh, we would probably have to send it out to an independent lab to have it tested. Um, there, there is no per se limit in the state of Minnesota. So right now, if, uh, you were arrested for DWI, we would have to show impairment and you'd be over a point oh eight. Cannabis does not have that. So. If we pull you over, we would have to show impairment number one. And then beyond that, there's no means of measuring other than just getting a, an example of THC was in your system. So that makes it very difficult from the enforcement side of it. Um, from the community standpoint, we've had one incident within the last couple of weeks. Where, uh, a child introduced it to some other child, children. And just said that they were gummies and ultimately his parents got involved and. Were kind of stuck because there really isn't anything we can do with it as far as charging those. Now, the sale of this to someone under the age of 21 with, uh, David and I were just talking about that. Really unclear on what charging statute we would have right now. We could probably get on the road, uh, if a parent did it, uh, to criminal neglect, that would, that would probably fall somewhere in that line. That's really all we have as far as the law enforcement side of it. Uh, I did hear, I haven't confirmed it yet, but I did hear one of the distributors. To the Northwest region of Minnesota, uh, uh, shipment was caught up somewhere in North Dakota. That contained greater than point three percent, uh, of the tetrahydrocannabis. So that would mean that that, if that was brought to this community, that would already be illegal per state statute. Because it contained more than the point three percent. Uh, some of the local consequences that we have for legal use. Uh, it is still a federal disqualifier for firearms permits and that's up to one year. So if you're caught with. Any of these products, even though they've been legalized by the state, they're still deemed federally not legal. And I can withhold your permit for one year or I can remove your permit for one year. And then Min dot currently has a zero use tolerance for commercial vehicle drivers and that would also fall under our employees as well. Linda, here we are.
Thank you, Jason. And good evening. So I'm going to talk a little bit about how our drug free workplace policy works and how this may affect, um, employees and applicants to the county. But we do have a drug free workplace policy. That's been in place for years. Um, and I'm not going to read through all of this. Like Jason, I'm going to summarize, um, some of it. So we do, um. I guess one thing to point out, we don't have an intention of interfering with the private lives of our employees. As long as what they do outside of their, of work doesn't affect their work. But when it comes into the workplace. And interferes with their work or public safety, we become involved in that. So that's what the reason for the drug free workplace policy is and how it's enforced.
Right, but in there. But, um, I want to make a distinction of. When you use words, I want you to think of that. Marijuana is something that's under, uh, the process of coming, leaving drugs, being used in forms, but, um, think of. Marijuana from a clinic to that world as much like. Drinking or drunk on the job, we also. So it's not one of the things, the law is. All. Potential intoxicants.
Thank you, David. So this policy does apply to all, um, of our employees, managers, supervisors, full-time, part-time. Interns and applicants for employment. And as David, um, pointed out. Basically 27.3, the, the prohibited behavior is, um, to use, possess, sell, trade. And or offer for sale alcohol, illegal drugs or intoxicants. Now we, I am, I have that. Highlighted the products containing THC to differentiate that, um, because technically that's legal in Minnesota. But it would be a violation of the policy to be under the influence of THC while working. So adding those three words. Um, would be something that we would look at doing in our policy to clarify that, um, on how that would go forward. Um, so there are consequences if, um, the drug free workplace policy is violated and those are actually, um. Managed by the drug and alcohol testing policy that I'll go through next. So I'll kind of cover that on what that discipline or, um, possible consequences are. I just want to say that we encourage people to seek help and we offer our employee assistance program. Um, we want people to be healthy that work for us. So our first choice is for us to get help for those employees and, um. Continue their employment with the county. Um, and we do have the employee assistance program available along with other resources in the community to help with that if the situation arises. Um, everything under the employee, under the drug free workplace is held confidentially, um, as it should be. And it is a responsibility, um, of everybody, um, to make sure that. Um, and I'm going to read that one section. It is a violation of this policy for employees to report to work. Or be subject to duty while their ability to perform the duties of the impaired due to on or off duty use of alcohol or other drugs. So that's the bottom line. If you get drunk before you come to work, um, it doesn't matter that you didn't use the drugs at work. If you are drunk or, or impaired while at work, it would be a violation of the policy. So our drug and alcohol testing policy, um, follows Minnesota statutes. Um, it's Minnesota statute 181, nine fifty through nine fifty seven, that really dictates the process that we use. Um, on our policy. We mainly test under three different situations. We have the pre-employment testing, which is what we put applicants. When we make a conditional job offer, they're subject to a pre-employment drug testing that is administered through Sanford's Ahmed. Um, Ahmed offices. We also do reasonable suspicion testing. So if, um, we believe somebody is under the influence, if there's an accident that we believe maybe is caused because of influence. Um, or other situations, then we have the right to send an employee to, um, be, um, tested under the reasonable suspicion testing. And the third one that we use, um, would be the random testing, which is, um, subject to what they call safety sensitive positions. Which would be our commercial driver's license holders, which are, um, highway department and solid waste department. People. So under the, um, drug and alcohol testing applicants, um, who. Test positive during the application process are given the opportunity to explain, um, a positive test. Um, before they are, their offer for employment is withdrawn. So if somebody was prescribed a medication that tested positive, we would look for. Um, prescription information, um, if there, um, there could be medicinal marijuana that would be, um, prescribed. Then we would, um, make sure that there's a plan available to work out depending on the position within the county. Of course, as Jason said, and, um, CDL drivers, there's a zero tolerance for that. So we would not be able to. Offer anything in that position, but depending on the situation, we look at each case individually and make those assessments, um, accordingly.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Um. I'm glad you brought that up about, uh, you know, and pre-employment, things like that. Uh, I was wondering, you know, do employees have to disclose that information? Um, and does that violate any HIPAA laws or, or how does that, uh, how do we. Address or handle the, uh, medical marijuana things, uh, uh, cards and, and things like that. So. I'm just kind of curious, you know, do we violate any HIPAA laws? So if you ask somebody and, and they, and they refuse. But, but I'm talking about pre-employment or. Uh, another question, Mister Chair. I'm wondering, when, when did we change policy or when was the last time the policy was updated? Because, uh. Kind of curious, you know, how or, or. Uh, why we're discussing this.
I believe the policies were updated in around 2010. Um, so that would have been when this policy was included in the.
So, so this policy is about 13 years old and, and. Um, with everything else, you know, may, maybe it's time that, you know, we. Maybe have a, have a little bit more discussion on, on some of these policies that, that maybe need to be updated.
And if I can clarify a little bit on our process, when we get a positive test result, so our testing Sanford Health, um, notifies us. So they, they do the test and then they're required to do what's called a confirmatory test. So if a. So if a initial test tests positive, they have to perform what is called a confirmatory test. That goes deep dives deeper into the testing to determine that there really is the substance present. They then reach out to the applicant and have a conversation, a doctor does, have a conversation about prescriptions that they may be on or whatever that situation is. And if that is all cleared out at that point, I don't even get those positive test results. Said, okay, we were, they were on a prescribed medication. It doesn't involve something that would have tested positive. If there's not a reasonable reason for that substance to be present. I get notified that there's a positive test result. I then send a letter to that applicant saying, we received this information. You have the option within three days to tell us what the pro, what the situation is. Or you have within five days to ask us to send the sample you provided to another lab to be retested. If you believe that the lab did not perform the test properly, they can ask for that to be retested. At that point, either we get additional information, sometimes it's, I have medicinal marijuana prescription. And I use it at this time and this is what it looks like. And it's not going to affect my work with Bell Trami County or it just really depends on what the situation is. And we have that conversation at that point and either we determine that, okay, well, because you're a CDL driver, I can't have that. Can't, can't employ you or, okay, that's something that because of your position, it's a prescription, it's legal. And we move forward with the employment. So we look at those individually based on the situation that that is involved. So there's doctors involved, there's official letters, they have the right to have that retested before we make those employment decisions.
Go ahead, Linda.
Let's figure out where I'm at. So that's for a pre-employment testing. If a current employee is tested be under suspicious. Const or situations and test positive. Again, our first priority is to get help for that employee. So they are given the opportunity to be evaluated and undergo treatment. Whatever the evaluator determines is appropriate for that particular employee. As long as the employee undergoes that treatment or the process, the plan that is put in place completes it and returns to work. We have the right to test for two years, but they would continue their employment. If they either refuse to go for testing, refuse to go for treatment, fail to complete the testing or test positive when they get back into the workplace. That would be grounds for termination at that point for being under the influence and violating those policies. So we work through that process again on an individual basis as needed at that time.
Mr. Chair. So, you know, being that this policy is thirteen years old and times are changing, laws are changing. You know, I, I guess I would make a, a suggestion or recommendation that, you know, we. Take a look at this policy. Had, had we had this information prior to today's meeting, you know, maybe, you know. Had a little bit more time to prepare for, for questions and things like that, but. So what if the state passes recreational marijuana? How, how will that affect our, our policy and, and our, our ability to. Employ folks because as, as it is, you know, sometimes we're, we're having a hard time. Finding, you know, employees. I, I think, you know, maybe with, with the updates to everything, you know, we need to take a kind of a modern approach to. To, you know, this type of thing, you know, I'm not saying I'm for, you know, recreational or, or medical or, or whatever. But I just want, I'm trying to look at this as, as from a policy standpoint.
Mr. Chair, I would think that we would treat it the same as we do alcohol. They can't show up drunk at work, they can't drive a CDL if they're, they have alcohol in their system. It wouldn't really be any difference in my opinion, Commissioner Summer.
Okay, we're kind of getting at that magic hour here.
Just talk just a minute about, we do two different types of drug testing. We do the non DOT five panel drug screening and the DOT five panel drug screening for our CDL holders. And during the random testing, we do the five panel screening other than. So our, our CDL drivers are subject to random testing. So we actually employ an outside agency that keeps, we give them all of the names of our CDL drivers and they randomly pull. People for testing at random times during the year. It's a requirement of the CDL testing. If any. CDL licensed driver tests positive for THC. If they bought a CBD oil over the counter that they were told does not have THC in it and using it because it helps them sleep at night. Which I guess is a pretty common thing and that had THC in it and they test positive for THC, their license is gone. It's a federal law, it's nothing that we can't do anything about it, we have to follow that federal law. They pull that license even if it's, oops, it was a mistake, it was CBD oil. It doesn't matter if it's present in their drug screening, their would be pulled for that reason. The dry, um, five panel drug screening does test for marijuana, cocaine. Four different kinds of amphetamines and seven different types of opioids and P and PCP. And things to consider, I guess marijuana is still illegal under federal law. And as I said at the beginning, the sheriff's office policies say that they have to follow all federal and state laws. So being under the, using THC would be against sheriff's office policies in that respect. Again, testing positive for THC is an automatic failure for the CBR holders. And we do maintain our drug free workplace. So in an effort to maintain that. What would that look like? We do want to give additional training to supervisors to help identify if somebody's under the influence of drugs. Especially the ones that can't be tested for so that we can get them the help that they need and make sure that they're still productive in the workplace. And that's it.
I think, I think that there'll be an opportunity to have you back again to answer some questions. Once, you know, people look through this information and, and as more comes out through the media. So thank you so much though for coming tonight and enlightening us.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do you know if there's any, any talks or discussions at, at the legislature in regards to medical marijuana?
I have not seen any. Have you noticed any discussion at the legislature?
I do know that the current House File one hundred bill does include regulations for hemp derived THC edibles. So whatever gets passed this month or next month. The hemp derived THC edibles updates will be included in that bill. So we'll stay tuned.
Okay.
Well, add the ministry report to the agenda.
Yes, we will.
I got that, I have that duly.
Oh, you are so good. All right, let's take a quick break.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No general comments by the board chair? Are there any citizens that have come to address the board? All right. Is there an approval of the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we accept. The agenda as written with the addition of ten A, the Nameless Coalition. Topic and ten B administrators update.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All fair is the eye.
Aye.
So moved. How about approval of the consent agenda? Would have a motion.
Uh, so moved.
A second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, the first topic is appointment to jail program committee. Tom, did you, or I don't see Mr. Riggs here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sheriff Riggs, I think, was just helping the, the young lady out with her equipment. So.
Should we just move to the other one first?
Uh, that would give him an opportunity to speak to the issue. If not, I can, I can speak to it as well.
Appointment to the jail building, oh, that's also his. How about the administrators report?
I could do that one.
Yeah.
All right, and I'll talk really slow. No, I actually, I actually can. Do that, but did you, did you want to do the Nameless Coalition one first?
Yeah, let's do that. I'm sure that they would appreciate getting home a little bit.
I might put ex commissioner Olson to sleep with my county administrators report, so.
All right, so the, you heard the presentation earlier. And I guess. We could open it up for questions or we could have a motion and a second and then have discussion. Whatever is something you would like to do.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we honor the contract with the Nameless Coalition by paying ten thousand dollars in the current budget year. And then we'll budget properly for the remaining twenty thousand in the twenty twenty four budget year.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, there's a second and now let's have a discussion as to. Questions or concerns or we can have comments from you folks as well.
Well, Mr. Chair. I, I would have seconded this, but I, I think, you know, in all fairness, I think I would like to. You know, honor, honor the contract as well, but also, you know, honor the years that we have agreed. You know, paying, you know, the Nameless Coalition as well. I mean, they have done the work. You know, as stated by hand, you know, do great work. So I mean, I. You know, they, they spent their reserves, you know, I think they're, they try to do the right thing in, in this past. And November, December, you know, we, we've, we've, you know, continued to. You know. Give out money to, to other agencies, you know, at their full request. Year after year, and I think, you know, if we want to be fair. That we, you know, honor, honor our part in our, in this contract, so. I'm not too, yeah, it's my discussion, I mean it. You guys want to make an amendment?
Okay, Joe.
I would be more interested in, in, and in paying the, the thirty thousand for the three years requested. Just because I'm looking big picture here and these are folks that really need help. They need a, a place to stay, they need supplies, food. And I don't really feel like anybody's a hundred percent at fault here. I mean, the county could have said something, the, the organization could have said something. anybody's a hundred percent at fault here. I mean, the county could have said something, the, the organization could have said something. I'm chucking this up to a, a, a bureaucratic glitch, um, and I just feel like the money's there from at least three different sources. There's more than enough money there from three different sources for, uh, thirty thousand dollars. I think we could give the administrator some discretion on how to, budget that, where to find that funding, uh, for, for the full thirty thousand dollars for the three years that, um, has been requested. So that, uh, that would be, uh, where I would like to see the the motion made.
Do you want to know?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd just be like, you know, certainly we could take the thirty thousand dollars out, but there are a lot of other needy organizations that have come to us for money that we, you know, could give that thirty thousand dollars to as well and, and not, um, you know, just to, to just be willy-nilly with the, with the budget and the reserves when it wasn't our responsibility to, to do this. I, you know, it's not in the budget for this year and to use reserves for it, uh, you know, you know, it's just not, not responsible behavior on the, the part of this organization. And similar to the other one that we talked about earlier today, um, in our work session, um, I just feel like we're rewarding, you know,
Mr. Chair.
Good business behavior.
Mr. Chair.
And so.
Okay.
Sure. Um, in, in response to Commissioner Gosbigs', um, uh, comment about willy-nilly, um, you know, I, I, I guess I'd like to remind, uh, Commissioner Gosbigs that, that we have made exceptions in the past. Uh, one example is for the Fair Board when they missed their deadline to, um, apply for the, the development fund. Uh, we, we made an exception there. Uh, we, we extended the, the, uh, deadline for, for the Fair Board, specifically for the Fair Board. So I don't think what we're doing is kind of willy-nilly. Um, and, and, uh, you're right, you know, we, we, we could be spending, uh, some of these monies, these one-time dollars on, on things. You know, I think it was back in December, again, uh, Ms. Matt came forward with, uh, with, uh, battered women's shelter, and at that time, you know, the, the county board, uh, declined as well. So, I mean, i- if we want to pick and choose, I, I, I think we should be fair to, to, to everybody.
Commissioner Sumner, the Fair Board is a whole different program. That's money that was already designated and budgeted and so, so not apples to apples by any means. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's not a fair comparison. That's, that's not a fair comparison.
Okay.
This is, this is a contract.
Let's move on.
They failed the.
Let's move, let's move on.
It's not the same.
Another, yes, uh, quick comment, um, in, in regards to the, the business-to-business practices, uh, we're a local government. This is a nonprofit organization, so there is a difference. Um, you know, you, you had mentioned, uh, uh, typical business-to-business, uh, the business practices. Well, I think this is a little bit different situation is all.
Okay. All right, Mr. Carlson.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. W- one of my concerns is if every time we have a situation like this come up and we say, oh, we have wha- whatever that acronym for that money, I don't remember, uh, what, what does that tell them? Yeah, or the other, that, or the other one.
The ARPA or the LTAC?
LTAC.
Yeah, so at some point, those aren't there anymore. And, and so I think, uh, that's why I made the motion the way I made it. So we'll have to find ten thousand dollars somewhere because it's not in the budget. Um, and then we budget for the remaining twenty. That, that's exactly why we would be honoring the contract, sort of. But we'd have to do it in a budgeted, responsible way. That's.
Uh, you want to make comment, either of you?
I would, Tim kind of, uh, took the words out of my mouth. I want to say that, that there is a precedent for, for, um, looking at partner organizations that are small and ran by very few people that sometimes make mistakes, you know? Um, the other point that I would make is, um, had, had, uh, had we properly invoiced and gotten these payments, you know, every year, I think of those years, I'm guessing that there was a, uh, um, that, uh, Health and Human Services was over budget. And, uh, every year, money is transferred from general funds to, uh, HHS to make them whole. Um, so let's say that that would have been a million dollars a year. I mean, I know in past years it was much more than that, um. So it would, instead of being a million dollars, it'd be a million point zero one, you know, so you would have already expended these funds from your reserves. And so that's what I would like to see is that, I mean, that's where it would have, that's where basically we saved, um, the HHS budgeted ten thousand dollars each of those years that would have been expended. You guys voted to expend it, you know, and so I would very much, our, our organization would very much appreciate, um, the, the, uh, the full amount, um, in this, you know, in this, uh, this fiscal year for us because we are seeing, um, some real budget issues. So it's rather timely for us that we found this, um. So I appreciate you're, you're looking at how to do it, but if, if I had my wish, my, you know, I would ask that you did it in a, you know, lump sum right now.
Okay, I think we've, uh, had discussion. Um, I would, I'm just, uh, going to say that I value also what was said by Anne, the fact that, uh, it wa- it has come to not necessarily rescue of, of our county, but certainly has helped, uh, take care of individuals in the county that have not been taken care of in the past. And I like, I like the motion, but I think with any small organization, they can use the money now because they're down, is, they're down to where they need the money. I would tend to, um, move in that direction tonight. But with that said, uh, could we have, uh, we can have a roll call? Vote on this? Okay. All right, Mr. Gooch. All right. That's okay. Sorry about that, Joe.
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Uh, no.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed, uh, and so we will direct, uh, our administrator, uh, to move forward with ten thousand this year and then, uh, was it twenty thousand and the following year?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, uh, do you mind? I just want to pass out a little. I meant to do this at the beginning in the work session. It's just a little fact sheet about, about some of the numbers that we, we've been serving.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, let's move on to, um.
You go back to eight?
Yes. Appointment of the jail program. Thank you for staying, Anne. Sheriff Riggs? Mr. Gould, I, I probably need that coke.
I'll save you the last.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Chair, with your permission, we're going to tag team this. Uh, okay, so we have two appointments. We'll, we'll, we'll address those independently. Uh, we were talking, um, in the, uh, steering committee recently of, um, that we held last week. And in regards to committee membership, there's been some adjustments that, uh, at, by, by members of the steering commis- committee in diff- different capacities as they've either moved in their ranks or jobs or those sorts of things. And so, um, we wanted to, when we spoke with Wendy Spry, um, she brings, you know, there were some, some adjustments that were being made in Department of Corrections, Tribal Relations, um, uh, area, and it makes sense that since Wendy has joined the steering committee, that we move her into a position on the programming tim- committee as well, so that would represent the interests of both the steering committee and also DOC and the tribal, uh, relations function as well. Uh, we've talked with Wendy about this. The steering committee evaluated, um, this, uh, you know, this request and is making the recommendation to the board for consideration of having Wendy Spry, uh, who is the DOC Tribal Relations Director now, um, join the, uh, programming, uh, committee of the, the jail. So, uh, we, we have had her participating at the steering committee level for some time. She brings an excellent perspective and a lot of great insight. Um, and we think that she can also serve that role in a more expanded capacity, working on the jail programming committee as well. Uh, that committee has been, um, taking a pause at the moment as we have placed our efforts in the, in the project on other aspects of the project at this point in time. Uh, but when it picks back up, it will have an integral role in, in incorporating, uh, in particular, the various programming aspects that the committees come up with, uh, in addition to the spiritual and cultural and other aspects that, uh, that go along with the programming into the design and operations, uh, component. Uh, so they'll be emerging, uh, at some level of the two as we reconcile the, the needs and wants with, you know, what the county can and is willing to, to pursue in regards to the project. So we feel like it's probably a very good time to have the DOC Tribal Relations, um, Director join the programming committee so that that perspective is provided inside that committee, uh, for, uh, for consideration, uh, of recommendations to eventually get to the steering committee and, and certainly to you. So that's the, uh, the first, and since we have them separate, I'll just pause there and, uh.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll make that motion to, uh, I guess for the sake of discussion, to appoint Wendy Spry, uh, with the jail program committee.
Second.
Second.
Um, Mr. Chair, so being that Wendy is on the, uh, jail steering committee, would, would, would that relieve her of that committee assignment or would she still be acting in both roles?
When the steering committee met last week and talked about this issue, it was anticipated that she would serve in both roles.
Which would be similar to Calandra, being on a steering committee and on the design committee. So that's not uncommon.
Well, Mr. Chair, and I mean, I, I guess I do have some concerns, you know, about, uh, you know, individuals, uh, serving on multiple, uh, committees. Um, you know, I mean, I, I know, I know that it's important that the share, you know, overseas, you know, multiple committees, um, who is our, you know, kind of our liaison, the county board's liaison to, to these committees, Calandra, you know, but I, I, me, I, I, I guess I, I think if, if, if we, these committees, if they're going to have the same person on each committee, I mean, what's the point of having, you know, the, the separate committees? Because if you're on the steering committee and, and, and you're going to be on the programming, or else if you're on the steering committee and going to be on the, the building and design, you know, I mean, it just, to me, it doesn't make sense, you know, it's kind of the same, same concerns that I had with, uh, you know, Mr. Loud, you know, being on, on multiple, uh, committees, um, you know, I, being on the jail steering committee, you know, um, I just think it's important that we have a, a diverse, uh, group, you know, and one that's not, that doesn't appear to be stacked or, or, you know, I mean, then could I, uh, could I join, you know, the program committee as, as a citizen of the Belltrami County? I don't know. You know, I mean, it's just, to me, I, I just, I, I appreciate, um, Miss Pry's work, but it's just something that I, I can't support, you know, it's, it's, to me, she's going to have to pick, you know, which one is, when, when it is, uh, but I mean, I'm only one member to
Yep.
of, of the county board, so that, that's my thoughts.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
It passed four to one. Okay, the next person, Tom?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, the next appointment we have is a vacancy that had been abandoned by one of our citizen members, and, um, we did an advertisement for this particular position. Uh, this is different than the last position because the last one, as you know, we are trying to in, in independently seek out representation from different governments, tribal organizations, uh, and, and such. This was a citizen position that we were looking to fill, uh, a vacancy in, and, uh, and so we, we did a advertisement in the newspaper, in the county newsletter and on the county website, and we ran that for some period of time. And we received two applications for, um, of interest. And, uh, when we reviewed those at the steering committee level, uh, one of the members that had applied also had kind of to Commissioner Sumner's point had also, um, already had a position on another committee, uh, and as the steering committee looked at that, uh, we felt like having two citizens who were, who were interested, um, and one already serving as a citizen on one of those committees. It made sense to give the opportunity to the other citizen. Um, and that other citizen who is Kate Repco, um, has an interesting perspective to add to the project, which was also intriguing to the steering committee. Uh, she provided a resume and also a cover letter, um, and, uh, what's intriguing about her is her background as an occupational therapist. Uh, and as she explains, she's worked, uh, or has work experience, um, looking at a person's environment and, um, occupation and the way that their occupation or work, um, either meshes or clashes with the facility that they're working within. Uh, she has lots of experience working, say, in nursing homes and other situations that she likened to the jail whereby there's sort of a captured audience, so to speak, that has to be supervised and loses a certain level of privacy and has interactions with a overseeing staff. And so, uh, she provided a, a really interesting perspective and, and also a, uh, a kind of neat opportunity to the steering committee for inclusion of those thoughts and ideas. Uh, so that, in addition to the fact that we had the other member already serving on a citizen role, uh, it was the recommendation of the steering committee that Kate Repco serve, um, on the design and operations committee for the jail, um, project.
Mr. Chair, uh, I'll make a motion to appoint Kate Repco to the jail, uh, building and design committee.
Second.
Second.
Question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? So moved.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Sickness last week. I missed out on all that conversation, so I didn't really have a lot to go on other than the, the agenda bill that Jared wrote, so.
Yeah.
Ah. All right, so now we have.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, we can't let him off that easy.
I would be so disappointed. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a couple updates from you, or for you, uh, well, since we're kind of talking about the jail, we'll continue on with that, uh, conversation. On the legislative front, as it relates to the jail project, the sheriff and I did go down last week, and, uh, we testified on Senate File twenty-seven twelve. This was the local option sales tax application that we had submitted. Uh, we didn't get a lot of time. As you know, there were lots of applications, um, and a short period of time to get through them. Uh, there didn't seem to be any concerns or questions or any of that stuff as it relates to our testimony or what we were requesting. I was, uh, told after that, uh, we had a very, uh, encouraging, um, uh, you know, testimony and that, uh, you know, things look good, at least at this point in time, but we won't really know that till, uh, you know, they, they do their final work on this. Uh, but in any event, um, we also talked with our lobbyist while we're down there, met with him, uh, and we, we we anticipate, or at least we're getting the indication that the other two bills that we had, uh, also developed will probably not receive a hearing. Uh, the one bill was in a, a straightforward appropriation. The second one was the inclusion into the bonding bill. That might get a hearing or it might, we're not really sure what, how that's going to be handled, but the appropriation bill doesn't look like it's going to be heard. So, uh, we're doing again, all that we can, uh, as we've promised, but, um, but that's the update on the legislative front as it relates to the jail project. Uh, moving forward, uh, we have, uh, the sheriff and I been reaching out and, and attempting to meet with, uh, business owners, organizations, associations to explain uh, the county's position on the project, where we're at, what the funding sources, alternatives are, and what the impacts of those are. Um, we have met, uh, uh, with, uh, the Noon Rotary, uh, which invited us to speak last week. We had a very good conversation. The sheriff did an excellent job presenting there. Uh, we also met with the Chamber of Commerce. I met with the Board of Directors, uh, last week as well. And, uh, we had a very good conversation there that, that lasted quite some time. Uh, the chamber is, uh, committed actually to helping us facilitate meetings with other business groups or associations, which we were pleasantly, uh, uh, pleasant, we were, we were, we're present, uh, we were happy to hear. And so, um, so we're excited about that. Our next presentation will be to the in-. And so, um, so we're excited about that. Our next presentation will be to the Innkeepers Association, um. And that will be, uh, later this month, I believe it's the nineteenth. Uh, our goal again is to try to get the message out in regards to what the county's, uh, done, and what it is currently doing. And what the impacts of, of all of these discussions and decisions may have, uh, in particular at the moment on the business community. Um, and we also want them to be well aware of the, of the other initiatives. Uh, and efforts that we've been putting behind finding alternative funding from as many other sources as we can. So, uh, so we're, we're pleased by our progress so far, and we're still continuing to reach out and try to get others, uh. Who are interested to meet with us, uh, believe that the chamber is going to pull together some, a variety of, of, uh. Its members that are, have specialty businesses that are going to be interested in this. Big box stores, for example, and, and the such, uh, wood, wood, uh, manufacturing or, or sales, um. Uh, facilities, and so we're, we're looking forward to making presentations there as well. Um, as it relates to project progress, uh, we developed a, uh, twelve-page comprehensive request for proposals for architectural design services. Uh, that went through the Design Operations Committee, also went through the, uh, Steering Committee. Then I put an advertisement that will run three consecutive Wednesday, Wednesdays, uh, coming up. So tomorrow and the next two Wednesdays, as well as the middle Sunday. Um, we also have about a list of seven to eight architectural firms that have reached out on their own accord that we're also submitting to. We've put on the website, um, and those, um, proposals will be due to the county, uh, at four o'clock. On April twenty seventh, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we have identified a selection committee that I will review and make recommendations. Uh, and then eventually, as we get to negotiations and hopefully a contract, uh, that will come back to the board, uh, for, uh. Your hopeful approval. Uh, and some good news, the State Department of Economic, or excuse me, Employment and Economic Development, along with Greater Bemidji and county staff. Um, conducted a successful Minnesota Investment Fund, or you might know that as the MIF, uh, fund. We had, had a closeout with Air Corps Aviation LLC. Uh, this signifies a successful use of the administration of those funds. And it also helped certainly Air Corps Aviation, uh, in promoting their investment in our community as well. So that was good news. Um, just a couple last, uh, lastly, a couple of important dates for you. Uh, we did intend to hold a joint meeting, you might recall, with the city of Bemidji. On May the eighth, uh, which we're approaching within about a month or so. Uh, but I'm not sure that that will happen given the current situation, uh, at the city at the moment. So I was going to give a few days to let things, uh, sort of settle and then, uh, maybe reach over and see if that's something they're still interested in. Or if they'd rather postpone that, uh, as they handle other business. Um, but if you would, please keep that on your calendar at the moment until I get confirmation one way or the other. Uh, it was, uh, eight, uh, excuse me, May the eighth. A Monday, I believe. Okay, and then lastly, I sent you an email on this, but just, uh, wanted to, uh, encourage, uh, participation in Leech Lake State of the Band address. Uh, which will be held at ten to two on April the twenty-first at the Northern Lights Casino and Walker. If you'd like, I can register you for that, or alternatively, I sent the instructions on how to do that, uh, yourself. Um, I believe the sheriff and I are headed to that, uh, and maybe a few other staff members. Uh, but it would be great if we could have a few more, uh, especially elected officials that will be willing to join us as well.
Tom, I just have a quick question that with regards to open meeting laws, if, if more than two commissioners wanted to attend, is that a problem? How does that work?
That's an excellent question. As long as you're not discussing county business, um, you can have a quorum attend because it's a different type of event, so. Uh, just don't talk about county business and you'll be in good grace. The same is true for going to training events. The same is true, you know. You happen to be at the grocery store at the same time, a quorum of you, uh, you know, or at a social or a ribbon cutting or any of those kinds of things. As long as you're not speaking about public business, uh, having ex parte communications that way on county business, you're in, you're just fine. Right. Sure, absolutely. Yep, you can. But if, but if they had an action, for example, this is a great expansion of the question. If they had an action that you were going, that, that you had to make on their behalf, you would not want to have an ex parte communication with them. That gets really dicey when you get to, um, kind of quasi judicial types of decision-making, like land use change, you know, like land use. Uh, or application types of things, um, so, but you can talk just general business with them, you know, what's going on at the county, how you, you know, all that sort of stuff. Um, but when it comes to an action that's pending before the board or likely to come before the board, that's also something you would want to refrain from. But it doesn't mean you couldn't be there to attend, so, yep, you're in, you're in good standing to, to attend. I don't, yep, thank you though.
All right, now we get to the, uh, legislative and commissioner report. We can kind of combine them if you'd like.
Joe? Um, not much to report, Mr. Chair. It's been pretty quiet on the committee meetings front. Uh, the most recent thing was a joint counties natural resource meeting that I attended. Um, that was mostly an update from the various state agencies. Uh, and, uh, the status of, uh, their omnibus bills at the legislature.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
Uh, Mr. Chair, since our last meeting, um, I have attended, uh, the jail steering committee meeting. Uh, by, by Zoom, and, uh, I, maybe I, I, I agree with Commissioner Carlson when it, when. When he says it's hard to hear, you know, conversations, you know, through, through, uh, Zoom or, or the, the. The room in there, so I'm hoping that at some point we can have some sort of discussion on how. To maybe improve the, the microphones in there or, or, or something like that. Um, the following day, I attended a ditch meeting up in. In, uh, Gregla, uh, which is always nice to, to get up there in that part of the, the county. And the. The Friday, last Friday, I attended the AMC Board of Directors meeting that was in conjunction with, uh. AMC Leadership Summit down at, uh, Grand Buoy Lodge in Nisswell, which was, you know, it's a nice, uh, two-hour drive. I, I appreciate the windshield time, gives me time to think and, and, uh, make a couple calls, return phone calls, things like that, so. Um, but at, at the Board of Directors meeting, we had an, uh. Update from, uh, a couple of gentlemen, uh, commissioners from Montana who have worked on the L E T C F fund. And trying to secure that, and they're going around asking, uh, counties that have received. Um, this money if they would graciously make a one thousand dollar donation, um, to. A, a research center. That's part of the Western Interstate, uh, region, which, uh, Minnesota is part of. Um, and I guess it, it's because of their efforts. That a lot of these counties have received this money, and I believe Beltrami County received one hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Um, but I know the AMC board is going to be working on this and maybe, uh, submit, uh, a letter. Or, or, you know, so what counties know what, what we're working on at the, the AMC board, so. Uh, that is that, and, um. As far as, uh, the meeting on May eighth, I will not be in attendance. Thank you.
All right, very good, um. Don?
Um, well, uh, Commissioner Sumner already just kind of summed up that my experience in the last three weeks being out of town. And I zoomed all my meetings, and some of them were pretty good, but the ones here, the workroom are, are not very good. So I can sympathize with anybody that has to zoom in to that room. It's, it's, it's difficult. But it worked really good here. Um, so that was.
Good.
Yeah.
As long as we have our speaker on.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, in fact, there was a couple of times I was trying to urge you.
Okay, go ahead, Greg.
We had a joint airport zoning board meeting, finished, uh, um, editing the maps of the ends of the runways for the, um. Changing the, the landing or potential crash landing zone areas, and, um, that is reverted back now to them to do the draft. Um, ordinance, if you will, or whatever, as well as, uh, you know, redoing the maps, changes that we made. Um, so that's in process. We want me, have a meeting in April. We'll have another one in May, um, to look at what they've come up with and. And once, uh, once that's all agreed upon, then we'll do a public, probably, you know, schedule a public hearing for the summer. So, so that's in process. We had a planning commission meeting. Um, we are in the middle of reviewing the draft shoreline ordinance. We're back on that after about a three-year hiatus. So, um, so that is, that is going to be coming up for the, you know, for us to make a decision on at some point. Um, and, uh, had some good news from, uh, Fire Chief Robert Jasper's from our Castle Lake Rural Fire Association. Um, he sent me a text yesterday saying that we were awarded a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from Enbridge, um, part of their, uh, fueling futures fund. And, uh, that, that money will hopefully be able to be used to kickstart a, a new fire hall for us. So I'm pretty excited about that as the chair of the Castle Lake Fire Association. I'm pretty excited about helping them.
Good. And I.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Gosby, um, the airport, can you remind me, is, is there only a one flight in and one flight out, or, or? Is it, that's what I heard out there?
Yeah, it's back to normal now, yeah.
What's normal, because I mean, I.
What it used to be before all the, the changing and schedules over the fall.
So, so no more, no more Brainerd stop, or?
No more Brainerd stop, and they do have the overnight, so they have the morning flight again, yeah, and that's, unfortunately, it's not. Our local control over that, that's Sky West that controls that, and, um, they've got some other changes that are not, not pretty for us either. You know, requirements for, you know, like, having flights that have both first class and coach, um, which is not. Feasible on our size aircraft and lots of, lots of challenges coming up for airport.
So is it, so, and, and you said there's nothing that Airport Authority can do about that?
No, it's all about the Sky West, their staffing and all that, so it's, uh, um, the only thing that we could potentially do would be. If there was another, uh, vendor like Sky West, another airline to replace Sky West with, but.
What about that one on, uh, see forever?
That, that would be probably the one, but there's advantages and disadvantages to everything, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're fighting through that stuff.
Uh, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, and I bask, uh, I sit on that board and we're going to go through this coming week. Three-hour session just evaluating which programs or nonprofits we're supporting. And making sure that, uh, we've covered the biggest need in, in the county with that organization. Uh, I'm also trying to line up, uh, visits with each of the townships that I represent. It's, uh, kind of interesting going to those townships and hearing, again, people on the, on the. Boots underground type people and what their needs are, um. And then, of course, uh, on Thursday, we have the Prime West, uh, meeting. And, uh, Commissioner Carlson is going to bring his extra shovel to make sure that we don't get stuck.
Collapsing.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just, um, thought I'd mention it. There is a, uh, invite for the State of the Band for Leech Lake in our mailboxes.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, any other business to be taken care of tonight? Not, could I have a motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good holiday.